Please Commissioner Marvin Whitworth will lead us in our prayer and our pledge. Marvin?
Let us bow. Our Holy Father, we are indeed grateful for the blessings of the day and for all the many things you've done for us. Father, we pray that you use us to do your will and pray that we have used your blessings in a manner that is appropriate. Father, we thank you for this body that makes decisions for our county. We pray that you give us wisdom tonight as we debate. We pray that you give us discernment wisdom as we make decisions. And Father, in all things, that your will be done. Father, we pray for our country. We pray for the divide that we now have. We pray that everyone will look to you, that they will have your love and your compassion for fellow man, that we can once again become a united country. Father, be with us as we go throughout this meeting and on out through life in Christ's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Call the roll, please, Gail.
Charlotte P. Chip Pinion.
Here.
Craig Lynch. David Jones.
Here.
Jim Aberwater.
Here.
Lee Bogle.
Here.
Marvin Whitworth.
Here.
Mike Kush.
President.
Pettis Reed.
Here.
Rhonda Allen.
Here.
Jeff Phillips.
Present.
We have a call.
Thank you. This meeting of the Rutherford County Regional Planning Commission is being conducted electronically pursuant to Governor Bill Lee's Executive Order 16. I would ask for a motion that conducting this meeting electronically is unnecessary to protect the public health, safety, and welfare in light of the coronavirus.
So Mr. Chairman, say.
Have a motion and a second. Please call the roll, Gail.
Chip Pinion.
Yes.
Craig Lynch. David Jones.
Yes.
Jim Aberwater.
Yes.
Lee Bogle.
Yes.
Marvin Whitworth.
Here.
Yes.
Mike Kush.
Yes.
Pettis Reed.
Here.
Rhonda Allen.
Yes.
Jeff Phillips.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We have no minutes to approve at this meeting, and we do have one item that's been withdrawn. If you want to make a note, Item 6AA, Holly Place, Section 2, Item Number 20-2045. This is for a final plat approval, and that item has been withdrawn. Item 6B, these are items that are on our agenda for rezoning requests that are scheduled for public hearings. And let me go ahead and announce that all of these rezoning requests will be heard before the full county commission on August the 13th, 2020, and it will be held at 6:30 in this room, August 13th, 2020. Item 6BA, the item number is REZ20-013, William Underwood, Location 2446, I'm sorry, 5446, and 5456, Morgan Road. Commission District is 8. County Commissioner is Pettis Reed. The size of the site is approximately 1.62 acres. Tax map is 140. The existing zoning is RL, residential low density. Proposed zoning is RM, residential medium density. Doug?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, and good evening, everyone in the room and those who are watching virtually as well. This first rezoning, as you stated, is located along Morgan Road. There have been two houses on this property for a number of years. There was a re-subdivision plat that was recorded for the property back in 2009, which swapped some of the land with the property to the west, southwest, in order to square up the property into the configuration that it's in today. The applicant wants to split the lot so that each house would be on its own lot, so that they can sell one of the lots and the house on the lot. The issue they're running into is that the property is zoned RL, which is residential low density, which requires a minimum lot size of one acre. Now, the zoning ordinance does have provisions for smaller densities, if there, yeah, smaller density, lot sizes, if the water lines in the area can provide adequate fire protection in the form of fire hydrants. CUD has determined, however, that a fire hydrant cannot be supported along this stretch of Morgan Road, so the lots would have to be at least one acre in size. Now, since the property isn't two acres in size, there's no way they can actually get one acre for each lot. Applicant and I have been in conversations about this over the last several months. You know, they tried speaking with adjacent property owners to see if they'd be willing to sell them just a little bit of property, about half acre or so, to help them get the two acres that they would need to do that. Unfortunately, those efforts didn't come, didn't produce any fruit for that. So what he's asking for at this point is to just rezone the property from RL to RM in order to be able to split the property the way that he wants to split the property. Nothing about this is going to be for redevelopment. Access to the property would remain along Morgan Road. There'd be no landscaping or buffering. Really, there'd be no change out in the area, just because there's already two houses there. This wouldn't be allowing anything that's not already on the property. Again, the only reason it's coming even before you in the first place is because that water line along Morgan Road couldn't support a hydrant. If it could have, we could have done the plat administratively. I would normally be opposed to a zoning application like this, especially being in the rural area and zoned RL, but considering the situation, I feel that this is an isolated incident, and I don't foresee any kind of impact to the surrounding area. It's still residential, single-family. Again, it's still going to be two houses. Most people that are going to drive by, or actually anyone drive by, is not going to know the zoning's any different. So with that, I'd recommend approval. And I'll be happy to answer any questions. And I believe Mr. Underwood, I saw his name on the list, so I think he has dialed in.
Any questions for staff at this time? Mr. Underwood, are you available?
Yes.
Would you like to?
And I'm representing my dad.
Would you like to make a few comments?
Well, he pretty much answered everything that I would have. But we're just wanting to split it where we can sell the one property.
Any questions for Mr. Underwood? Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. We need to do a public hearing. My fault. My bad. At this time, I'll declare a public hearing open for Item Number REZ20-013 for William Underwood. Anyone wishing to speak, whether here or online? Hearing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Now, David, did I hear your voice?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I would recommend approval with staff comments.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'll second that, Pettis Reed.
Thank you, Pettis. We have a motion and a second to approve Item REZ20-013 for William Underwood. Any other questions or comments? Call the roll, please, Gail.
Chip Pinion.
Yes.
Craig Lynch. David Jones.
Yes.
Jim Aberwater.
Yes.
Lee Bogle.
Yes.
Marvin Whitworth.
Yes.
Mike Kush.
Yes.
Pettis Reed.
Yes.
Rhonda Allen.
Yes.
Jeff Phillips.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Motion carries. Item 6BB, REZ20-014, Omar Alhamid. The location is 3776 Shelbyville Pike. Commission District is 6. County Commissioner is Joe Frank Jernigan. The size of the site is approximately 2.4 acres. Tax map is 136. The existing zoning is RM, residential medium density. Proposed zoning is CG for commercial general. Doug?
Yes, sir. Thank you. The applicant would like to zone this property to commercial general in order to construct a motor vehicle sales lot on the property. As we've discussed in the past, commercial general is the first commercial zone of the three that we have that would allow motor vehicle sales as a use by right. Operating hours, according to his application, would be Monday through Saturday from 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. The applicant anticipates about five employees on the site and would also offer automobile repair services. There was no concept plan submitted with the application. This application is not for a plan development, so the applicant cannot be held to the specific activities or any of the number of employees or anything like that. But just so you all were aware that, again, this, no actual concept plan was submitted as well. Access to the property would remain along Shelbyville Pike. Of course, any new or modified access points would have to be approved by TDOT, as Shelbyville Pike is a federal and state road. All parking maneuvering areas would need to meet county regulations, as demonstrated on an engineered site plan, should this application be approved. He would also be required to install a Type 2 buffer adjacent to any residentially zoned property. Property to the north is zoned commercial services. That was rezoned a few years back in order for someone to run kind of like a, I won't say a flea market, but like a fruit stand kind of a thing on a more permanent basis. However, after they got zoned, they submit a site plan, but then nothing really ever came of the application after that. Performance standards would also have to be maintained, as far as noise, dust, orders, et cetera. Just under my staff recommendation, I'd make mention of the recently recommended approval of a similar application to the south of the subject property, which is closer to the Davenport Station subdivision. The application was already, or I'm sorry, the property was already zoned commercial services. The Planning Commission did recommend approval of the commercial general zone, but right before the county commission meeting, they decided to pull the application. After talking to the applicant, he knew somebody else that was kind of going through the site plan review process and didn't realize he was going to have to go through as much as they were going through. Of course, now we tell them on the front end, they have to have a site plan, but I guess it just didn't quite click with them. But anyway, so that property does remain zoned commercial services. This property is located within the general urban character area, analog and urban arterial that has over 35,000 vehicle trips per day. The closest property that is zoned to allow motor vehicle sales is located within the city limits, about 1,700 feet to the north of the subject property. So with that, you know, staff didn't have a strong opinion on this one way or the other. So with that, we'll be happy to answer any questions, and I believe the applicant is present for this application.
This is a different individual than the empty bottle?
Yes.
Totally different?
Completely different. Yes, sir.
And the car lot you're talking about is across the road from the empty bottle? Is that, that's the one that you're talking about?
The one that I was talking about was, well, the one I was talking about was actually the empty bottle.
Yeah, but there is one across.
There is one across the street from that. Yes, sir. The one, actually, the commercial, the zoning I was talking about was a little to the north. That property is a little further to the south than that property is to the north.
Other questions for staff? Applicant available, Mr. Alhamid?
Did you want to speak? Okay.
Would you please come up? Someone may want to ask you a question.
Come up to them.
You come up here and stand and talk into the microphone? Very good. Once again, just highlight your plans of what you're wanting to do with this piece of property?
Car lot. I want to make car lot.
Any questions for the applicant? Craig?
How many cars will you have on the lot for sale at one time? Will they all be, will you be working on cars there? I know sometimes you work on some cars, maybe not in you particularly, but some car lots do work on cars, maybe that need a little bodywork and a shop out back and then to sell them. Is yours just going to be cars for sale, or you're going to work on cars?
I want just a sale car, just sold car.
Just the cars for sale? You don't work, don't work on the cars?
Maybe some of them, maybe not, should be good car.
No body work there? Are you going to build a garage? Of course, you'll have a sales lot that you'll be, are you going to build a garage back?
Yeah, for detail, for clean the car.
We'll build a garage.
Yeah.
Any other questions for the applicant at this time? Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ready for our public hearing? At this time, I'll declare a public hearing open for Item REZ20-014 for Omar Alhamid. Anyone wishing to speak? Hearing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Commissioners?
There's a house right south of this. Isn't there a home right south of this? You had any calls from anybody?
Not that I can recall. I know I haven't taken any personally, and no one signed up, you know, for the public hearing, the virtual, online, so no one's really, I haven't really gotten any comments on this one, one way or the other.
Now, that part of the world is completely changing all through there, so maybe they're waiting to see what this does to do with theirs. Who knows?
I know we're talking about the rezoning and not necessarily the site plan, but just to help me get a picture of how things would lay out, can you refresh me what size that lot was, where the empty bottle was? Because I know we talked about that layout.
Yeah.
And a half, 2.4 acres?
I can't, oh, that was this one. Just bear with me just a second here. All Doug's pulling that up. I'll ask our commissioners, who are attending via Zoom. Can y'all hear us okay? Do we need to speak up? We all right?
Yes, sir.
I can.
That property, that was 3940 Shelbyville Pike. That was Karzim Muhammad Ali was his name. That property was just under an acre, 0.87 acres. Yeah.
Any modifications to that site? We'd have to have a site plan brought before us.
Yes, sir, there would be. Right now, I mean, he'd be probably putting a new building in, so any new building from scratch like that, we'd want to see, the Planning Commission to see that. So, and then the parking areas and everything associated with it now, that generally is staff review, but if he's planning on putting any kind of a garage or building on a property, he would have to have a site plan that would perhaps come before you. And a commercial driveway entrance, so it would have to also get approved by TDOT as far as the commercial entrance permit was concerned.
Subject to staff comments.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve Item REZ20-014 for Omar Alhamid. Any other questions or comments? Call the roll, please, Gail.
Chip Pinion.
Yes.
Craig Lynch. David Jones.
Yes.
Jim Aberwater.
Yes.
Lee Bogle.
Yes.
Marvin Whitworth.
Yes.
Mike Kush.
Yes.
Pettis Reed.
Yes.
Rhonda Allen.
Yes.
Jeff Phillips.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item 6BC, item is REZ20-015 for Doug Atkins. The location is on Franklin Road. Commission District is 20. The county commissioner is Trey Gooch. The size of the site is approximately 20 and a half acres. Tax map is 94. Existing zoning is RM, residential medium density. Proposed zoning is CS for commercial services. Doug?
Yes, sir. Thank you. The applicant would like to zone this property, as you stated, commercial services, in order to relocate an existing concrete construction company, pool sales installation business, excuse me. Hours of operation and number of employees, et cetera, were not described in the application materials, but it did include a concept plan that has been included with your agenda packets. Again, this is not asking for a plan development, so we can't hold him to a concept plan, but at least gives you an idea of the direction he wants to go with his development. Access would be along Franklin Road. Of course, any new or modified access points, again, similar to the application we just looked at, would need approval by TDOT, since Franklin Road is a state highway. The applicant is showing a gravel drive. County standards will require this access drive to be paved. We have had several discussions with the applicant about that. He might try to possibly, maybe if he gets this rezoning secure variance later in the process, but that's not something you would need to worry yourselves about tonight, but that is a discussion that we've been having. And parking and maneuvering areas would also have to meet county regulations, as demonstrated by a site plan, again, similar to what we were just discussing. Commercial services, CS zone properties, would also be required to install a Type 2 buffer adjacent to residentially zoned property. A portion of the property immediately to the east is already zoned CS, so there'd be no buffering required along that common property line. The concept plan does show the development being located in an existing clearing, and when you look at the aerial photos of that site, you can see that there is a significant area of existing trees, which can be used as part of their buffering requirements. A landscape plan, however, would have to be required, would be required along with the site plan to ensure conformance with our landscaping regulations, and again, performance standards would also apply. You can see from the map on the, that Mike has up on the screen right now, the commission has considered several applications for commercial and even some of the agricultural zones over the last several years, most recently that property immediately to the east of the subject property, again, portion of that being zoned commercial services. Franklin Road is identified as an urban-style corridor in our comprehensive plan, which does anticipate non-residential uses. Overall, you know, this seems to be, over the years, it's just developed into a little bit of a commercial node here, so this is not inconsistent with that. So staff is comfortable with it, and we would recommend approval. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Doug. Any questions for staff? Looks like we've got Mr. Atkins and Ms. Hickerson and a Mr. Gordon that are either here or online. Would any one of you like to speak?
This is John Gordon, working as engineer on the project. If you have any questions, we can answer those.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Any comments you'd like to make?
I don't think anything other than what Doug has already mentioned.
Any questions at all for the applicant? Thank you. This time, I'll declare a public hearing open for Item REZ20-015 for Doug Atkins. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this rezoning request? Please come forward. Hearing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Commissioners?
Doug, you had any calls on this?
It seems that we did get a couple of phone calls at the office about it, really just informational. Nobody, nobody opposed to it or anything.
I'll make motion approve.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second.
Very good. We've got a motion and a second to approve REZ20-015 for Doug Atkins. Any other questions or comments? Call the roll, please, Gail.
Chip Pinion.
Yes.
Craig Lynch. David Jones.
Yes.
Jim Aberwater.
Yes.
Lee Bogle.
Yes.
Marvin Whitworth.
Yes.
Mike Kush.
Yes.
Pettis Reed.
Yes.
Rhonda Allen.
Yes.
Jeff Phillips.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item 6BD, REZ20-016 for John Radford. Location is 640 Double Springs Road. Commission District is 21. The county commissioner is Shanto Sharino. The size of the site is approximately 11 acres. Tax map is 104. Existing zoning is RM for residential medium density. Proposed zoning is for PUD, planned unit development for a wrecker service. Doug?
Yes, sir. Thank you. This property should look familiar to the Planning Commission. There was a rezoning application for this property that was considered by you back in March of this year. The request, as you recall, was for light industrial zoning, which was ultimately denied due to the range of uses that are found in the light industrial zone. Now, the Planning Commission recommended at that time that the applicant pursue a plan development approach, which led to the application that you have before you today. Just as a way of refresher, this property was approved for a special exception for a septic tank storage back in 1994, and you'll find the attached order of action in your agenda packets as well. Aerial photography from 2019 shows several septic tanks still being stored on the property, which is consistent with that approval. There's an existing trailer on the property. Applicant would like to rezone the property in order to operate a wrecker service facility. Wrecker services are classified as transparent warehousing, which are only allowed by light and heavy industrial zones or in the EAC. But again, since the Plan Commission and staff weren't comfortable with the light industrial classification they're asking for, they are going for the plan development approach. According to the information provided in the applicant's pattern book, which is on your iPads as well, he plans to use the existing mobile home on the property as an office. Of course, you'll have to make sure that that can meet code requirements. In the future, he'd like to add a 2,400-square-foot shop to the property. He plans to utilize the existing cleared area for his business. He also plans to preserve the existing screen on the property. As you look at the aerial photos, it's a very heavily wooded site, so he's going to preserve a good amount of that for his, for his screen, although he still may need some along the south property line toward the front, a little sparse in that area. The pattern book states that he will have two employees. His business will be open 24 hours a day, seven days a week, although there may not always be somebody on site. He plans to have capacity for about 50 cars, and will have a paved area for employee and handicap parking. I would also, again, just point you to the pattern book for additional details. Access to this property would be along Double Springs Road. The applicant does propose to use the existing driveway. The storage area would be behind the existing tree line, so you really wouldn't be able to see much of anything as far as the business is concerned. There is an electric line easement that would preclude any buildings being placed under that particular easement, but storage of vehicles may be allowed. The pattern book does appear to show gravel access to the property. Again, we discussed this in the last application as far as paved parking and access, but that's something we can work with the applicant on. Access to the property and parking areas would have to be built, again, to county standards. The pattern book, just talking about landscaping, does show the existing landscape screen being preserved. This is classified as a transport warehousing use, which would typically require a Type 3 buffer adjacent to residentially zoned property. But again, as we talked about, existing plantings could be counted towards that. Had some discussions with City of Murfreesboro officials regarding some concerns they had with this application. Directly to the west, they approved a residential development, again, directly to the west of this property, which I did include a copy of their attached plan, just for your reference. However, I feel if they preserved that existing landscape material on the back of that property, that should go a long way in screening any kind of adverse effects, as far as any appearances, noises, or anything like that from the subject property, but I wanted to pass those concerns along to you from the city. And again, performance standards would have to be met. This property, again, was granted a special exception back in 1994 for the storage of septic tanks. It was never rezoned to any kind of a commercial or industrial classification and does remain residentially zoned today. Closest non-residential zoning, as we discussed at the Planning Commission, is located at the intersection of John Bragg Highway and Double Springs Road. We did recommend denial of the request to light industrial, but staff is more comfortable with the plan development, being that there's more certainty to what the applicant's proposing here. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions, and I believe I saw the applicant, or at least his representative, log in online, so.
Very good. Any questions for staff at this time?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Yes, Rhonda.
Doug, what prevents, I don't know if it's regulations or what, but what prevents a wrecker service from turning into a junkyard?
It's a totally different classification. I mean, honestly, it would just have to be a situation where we are diligent in monitoring what's going on on the site. If we start getting complaints from the area that there's a lot of cars coming in, we start seeing cars piled up and everything, so he's bound by whatever's in here, you know, the storage of upwards of 50 cars. If he starts getting 75, 100 cars on the site, obviously, that's outside of his approval, and we'd be able to look at zoning enforcement from that point.
Are they obligated to turn the cars over every so often, or can they, you know, like, could I tow a car in and it just stay indefinitely? Because the reason I'm asking is I'm concerned about, you know, you know, seepage of oil[1780.13] and, you know, hazardous liquids, that kind of thing. I'm trying to figure out how quickly, you know, everything's going to be moving on and off this property, or if things are going to just come and sit.
Yeah, there's nothing in the pattern book that states how fast things are kind of moved on-site and off-site. The applicant may be able to give you a better idea as far as that is concerned. Now, I agree with you, and I believe our engineer, Mike Hughes, does as well as far as the seepage and things. They'll have to, you know, take steps to adequately mitigate some of those things. Mike, did you want to add anything on to that?
No, just exactly what you said. I mean, it's not a zoning issue, it's more of a site plan issue. The, the property is part of a large sinkhole, and you can see a lot of water standing in this area on both sides of, of the road on Double Springs. So that was my concern, that if you've got some wrecked cars that have some fluids leaking, they might be leaking into this sinkhole, and that's, that's something we'd have to address pretty seriously to make sure that we don't contaminate the groundwater.
And so I guess that's more of a codes enforcement issue, because, I mean, how do you know if that's happening?
Do they have inspections?
It would have to have a, forgive me, a, it's, it's like an industrial stormwater pollution prevention plan that would have to have regular inspections that the state would require, that we could also follow up with. Any site plan, any stormwater improvement, will have to have a long-term maintenance agreement that the, the owner-operator would have to maintain a, a level of service that where the county's comfortable with, that pollutants aren't seeping into the groundwater. So we, we would have to closely watch this at the site plan phase. So I'm just bringing this up now because I think it's going to be a challenge when they do bring a site plan forward, that they'll have to address, you know, the automotive fluids, the oils, the, you know, transmission fluids that might be leaking from wrecked cars. So we, that's, that's my concern, is contaminating groundwater.
Yeah, and I guess that's the reason for my concern as well, because I actually live near a wrecker service, and it constantly looks like a junkyard. I, I have no idea, you know, what's going on over there, but it doesn't look good, doesn't look healthy, and it's right next to a drainage area. So I just, I'm just trying to make sure that we're smart about how we monitor this on the front end, because once he gets in there, it's a whole lot harder to make any adjustments then. That, that's just the reason for my asking.
Thank you, Rhonda. Anyone else have questions for staff at this time? Jim?
Yes, trying to reconcile this proposed site plan as part of the package that they submitted with the aerial photo. It appears that just to the south of that driveway where they will be entering, is that a home there? Very close to the property line, and the driveway seems very close to the property line. And I heard that they were going to have trucks coming, going 24 hours a day, you know, I'm sure not all night, but I would assume that it's many nights, it's after dark, trucks would be coming and going for emergency pickups and whatnot. Uh, is there, you know, is there some way to get part of, some sort of screening or a little bit better protection there than what is offered, than having those trucks rumbling up and down right, right beside your house?
Yes, sir. When, yeah, when I was talking earlier, that was actually the part of the site I was talking about probably needed to be beefed up as far as buffering was concerned, because that, that area is pretty sparse right through there. So the applicant, you know, would be incumbent upon them to propose some additional buffering in that area. But, yeah, that was the area I was talking about.
Any other questions for staff at this time? I believe there's a Mr. Radford and a Mr. Roundtree that are attending the meeting via Zoom. Anyone you would like to speak, please?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. I am with Mr. Radford, and we have heard the concerns, Mrs. Allen's concerns, and one of the things there that...
Take a deep breath.
Yeah, I don't know if Clyde, if you can hear me, you've, you've frozen up. We can't see or anything, nor can we hear you.
We're going to move on, and Mr. Roundtree, if we can pick you back up, we'll come back to you, okay? At this time, we'll conduct a public hearing. So I'll declare the public hearing open for item REZ 20-016 for John Radford. Anyone wishing to speak on this rezoning request? Hearing or seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed.
Commissioner Chanto Sharino is here, if you wanted to hear from him. Say, Chanto is here, if you wanted to hear from him. Say, Chanto. Commissioner Sharino, if you wanted to speak.
I see the county commissioner here for this district, Commissioner Sharino. Do you have anything to say?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Larry Sims just called me, asked me to, you know, to come listen, so I'm here. This is my second time I represent that district, you know, Double Spring Road is very close to that, and so I noticed Mr. Sims and Mr. Brithford tried to do, to adjust anything that we want to do according to the engineer or director planning. So I looking forward to hearing more from the staff again. Thank you, sir.
Any questions or comments while we're still waiting?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Pettis?
Yeah, as I've sat here and looked at the PUD that we have here before us tonight, I have to go back to the last time this was brought before us, and I remember the gentleman making his presentation to us. And I have to go back to the fact of the way that he had done his homework on this project. And I know it's been mentioned there about the houses close by and, and what was there, but you have to remember that he had gone to every one of the houses that are on that road near where this is located. And I had to remember back to that time, and I had to remember him saying this, and I was so impressed to that point, I don't know how many times we've had people that have come before us, and we always have to ask, have you had any type of public meeting with the people that live out there? He not only has talked to them, but he's gone to their house and met them, and he even had their names, or he could quote those to us. And I was so impressed with that to that point. But then I'm sitting here tonight, here we're calling for a public hearing, and I wondered, you know, if the people out there had a problem with him, would they not be showing up here tonight to talk about this? So this was just something I wanted to bring up from the last meeting to where we are tonight, that we brought this back into a PUD. And yes, there are going to have to be some things done to it, and it will have to be brought back to us in a concept plan to look at this again. But, you know, we are talking about the fact of a wrecker service, and if you've ever been out there and you needed a wrecker service, you know, there, those are needed, and what we have to do there. And I have to stop and think here, a wrecker service has got to be traded somewhere in the neighborhood of what we do in agriculture. We can't drop oil. We can't drop anything on what we do out here, because we're subject to cleaning that up and getting it done. So I'm pretty sure they would be somewhat in the same, same situation. But I think if an individual's gone to the trouble of putting a PUD out there, that should make some type of difference that they still are interested in doing this, and they're going to try a lot harder, because any of us know what it costs to do one of these pattern books. It's not, it's not inexpensive to do it. But that's just some comments that I have by looking at this and seeing what the individual did the last time.
Thank you, Pettis.
Just to kind of follow up with what Pettis was saying, there was a neighborhood meeting as well held on this particular application, just because it is a planned development and is required before an official application is made. It had to be virtual, of course, because of the environment we're in right now. But the meeting essentially was composed of Mr. Radford, Mr. Roundtree, and myself. You know, they were sitting in their office, and I was sitting at my house, as I remember, or I may have been in my office, I don't remember. But that was it, for about 10, 15 minutes. They did mention that someone had called and had some concerns, but they were going to call him, that he didn't show up to the meeting, they were just going to call this person back specifically. But that was the last that I heard anything about it, and we really hadn't received many phone calls of any of this application at, at the office either.
Very good.
Hey, Chairman Thoms, I'm on the line now. For some reason, our video went down, so if I missed out on a question, I'd be glad to answer it if we can.
Pick up where you left off.
Yeah, I was just discussing that we had...
Pick up from the beginning. You, you kind of, you kind of cut out right from the start, so start all over.
Okay, okay.
Thank you, Clyde.
Yeah, Mr. Radford and I, Johnny met with the neighbors before the first zoning and met with them individually, you know, and met with them and kind of told them the program that he's interested in doing on the site. And then that lady who is basically directly to the left, that's by the driveway, he spoke to her specifically. She had no problem with the business he's recommending, and she really didn't really want to close it in at all, so. But he's, he's more than committed to making sure that there's a type, you know, the type-three buffer where it is thin next to that property, because the driveway does sweep towards that, that left side of the property. And if we even had to adjust the driveway over a little bit to make sure that we had enough buffer, more than willing to do that. And then also, as far as Doug had mentioned, we need to widen the throat on that entrance to make sure that the cars can turn in easily, the wreckers can turn in easily. So that was part of the comments that we addressed in the book. And then as far as Mike's concerns, as he mentioned, that as far as any sort of byproduct of, you know, of the business as far as leaky fluids, I spoke to Mr. Radford about that today, and there's a little protocol in his business about where those kind of cars would go on the site. And we can obviously move them as far away as possible to where that identified sinkhole area is where it kind of drops down in grade. But there's also, as Mike mentioned, there's protocols we'll have to follow from a TDEC standpoint to make sure that, you know, we're being responsible environmentally towards any of those substances that come through that site, especially from a leaky vehicle. As far as what I was mentioning with Mrs. Allen's concerns was that she can see the wrecker service, and she kind of noticed that it becomes a junkyard. I'll have Mr. Radford specifically address how that, you prevent that from a business standpoint, because I know that his goal is to keep as many spaces open. He doesn't want a lot of cars that sit around for months. And I think there's some protocol that is much more part of his business, so he'll talk about that. But we do plan on preserving every ounce of existing material along Double Springs Road, because it's in his interest to keep that business behind, kind of that barrier visually, and he has no need for any kind of a, a business frontage. And that's primarily because he's, he's well-established, you know, been working Murfreesboro areas for over 20 years. And so that's, it's really just an opportunity for him to have his own, his own place for his business, and, and it hits the specs for what he needs, as was mentioned in the pattern book. No more than 50 cars would be ever on-site, and those cars are pretty much in the undisturbed area. I would like to bring your attention to, Doug had mentioned that if there's ever an expansion of those 50 cars, we did put in a pattern book, I basically put a box behind the existing trailer as to where, if you were to expand the business at all, it'd be behind the trailer, and that's kind of away from that sinkhole area to make sure that, that there's a comfort level, that the, all the density of vegetation that's on the rear of the property is going to stay, definitely providing us a buffer with any future subdivision that may be in that area. But with that in mind, I'm going to have Mr. Radford speak about Mrs. Allen's concerns about, you know, a wrecker yard becoming a junkyard.
Good evening, y'all. I'm Johnny, we're here for wrecker service. The, the answer to the question as far as trying to keep it from becoming a salvage yard, when we tow in, we tow in our wrecked vehicles, normally the insurance is, within a week, normally has those cars moved out into a body shop. The cars that normally stay longer is what's considered abandoned vehicle, like if the police has us picking somebody's car up off the side of the road. We have to bring it in, we have to file with the state. Sometime that goes up to three months, waiting for a process to go through. And that's literally the longest that we want to stay in there, because it's costing us money for taking up a spot, because the abandoned vehicles, if we're going through that, they're not going to pick the vehicles up. We're just going to go through a process and go get rid of them. You know, send them to a salvage yard. The, I just, this week, so fortunate for a salvage yard, that we finally got our paperwork going. At the length of where I'm here now, but that's, you have to stay up to paperwork. Don't sit there, you know, because it is easy to, for that to happen.
Mr. Radford, can you hear me?
Sir?
Can you hear me, Mr. Radford?
Yes, I can.
We cannot hear you, so you need to speak up.
Okay. Can you hear me better now?
Yes.
Okay, you want me to start all over? The, we were talking about the cars that, that are, how to keep it from becoming a salvage yard. Our wrecked vehicles are normally out of there with, normally within a week, because the insurance are, normally stay on top of those. The cars that, that normally get left for a longer period of time are some that don't have insurance that have a wreck, that people leave with you, and they don't never call you. You've got to go through the state to find out, you know, who they are, and that, that's a process that you have to go through. You have to send them a letter, wait for them to send you a letter, then you have to send registered letters out to the people that own the vehicles, and that they have so long, and that's normally a three-month process right there. And that's where some of the vehicles get held there longer, and, but you want them out of there as quick as possible, because that's not generating you money. So you're trying to hurry up and get those out, so you have room for the ones that are getting you money. That, that's how we deal with it, you know, trying, where it don't look like a salvage yard, so it stays clean and the numbers stay down.
After, after that three-month period is over, does that car become yours and then you dispose of it?
Yes, sir. After all the paperwork is over, yes, sir.
Okay, all right. So probably three months would be the max on it, because people don't want to leave them out there, because they got to pay you a storage bill, and then you want to get rid of them, because they're taking up your space, too.
Yes, sir, exactly. And, and, you know, most of the time, if they get left there, that's somebody that has no care about the car, but they don't want to give you the possession of the car, so you've got to go through the paper. It, it costs us more, right, right now, your salvage vehicles, I sell, most of my stuff goes to Avery, it's auto salvage out in Leana. But like, right now, we're getting $150, $200 a car. And a city call, just to tow in for a city wreck for the police department is $200. So at that point, we've lost money already. And then we're having to hold that car, so we want it out of there as quick as possible to, you know what I'm saying, so we can get another car in there that, that's paying storage.
Yeah, I understand.
Mr. Radford, any, any repair work or reconstruction or anything would happen on this site at all?
The only repair work, if, if we got to build the garage, which is in one of our future phases, if we did that, the only repair work would be on our vehicles, to service our vehicles. And if we had a car that needed some kind of minor repair to be able to sell it, you know, one that was left with us, you know what I'm saying? The, but that, that would be it. But, I mean, no, no major work and no outside work, nothing.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you for your participation today. I think we've already had our public hearing. We've discussed it with staff, and we're ready for a motion from a commission.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Yes.
David Johnson.
Hey, David.
I had made the original request for this to be approved in the rezoning phase and I'm happy to see it come back as a PUD. I'm a lot more comfortable after hearing the concerns of the other commission as far as rezoning this as commercial. The PUD seems to be more manageable and I would make a request for this to be approved with staff comments.
I have a motion and a second to approve item REZ 20-016. Other questions or comments? Ready to vote? Call or roll, please, Gal.
Chip Penion.
Yes.
Craig Lynch. David Jones.
Yes.
Jim Aberwater.
Yes.
Lee Bogle.
Yes.
Marvin Whitworth.
Yes.
Mike Kush.
Yes.
Pettis Reed.
Yes.
Rhonda Allen.
Yes.
Jeff Phillips.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Motion carries, thank you. Item 6BE, REZ 20-017, Rob Mulchan for Robert Stroop. Location is Lidle Creek Road. Commission district is six. County Commissioner is Joe Frank Jernigan. The size of the site is approximately 78 acres. Tax map is 134. The existing zoning is PUD for a planned unit development for a residential subdivision. Proposed zoning is a revised layout, PUD amendment. Doug?
Thank you. The PUD zoning for this property was approved by the Board of Commissioners back in April of last year. A preliminary plan for Section 1 was approved by the Planning Commission back in October of last year. Since that time, it's been determined by the applicant's design engineer that a portion of this property is not suitable for development. Essentially, all the residential lots on the west side of Lidle Creek Road have been removed from the development and additional lots have been added to the east side. Overall, the number of residential lots has decreased from 132 to 94, which if my math is right, is a reduction of 38 lots. A copy of the originally approved PUD design is included in the pattern book. And again, that is a separate attachment you can find on your iPads tonight. The standards from the original approval have remained the same. Minimum lot size is shown to be 10,000 square feet. Minimum house size is at 1,800 square feet. Sidewalks, houses, styles, everything like that, streetlights are proposed, centralized mail kiosk, underground utilities. There is a significant amount of open space on this, even more so now with the reduction of the lots. And again, additional information can be found in your pattern book. Consistent with county requirements, a neighborhood meeting was held on June 8th of this year before this application was made. This was a virtual meeting again due to the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic. Questions were asked about the particulars of the development as well as the lots that will front along Lidle Creek Road. Access to this, each section of this will be from Lidle Creek Road. The pattern book states each house will have a driveway as a minimum of 16 feet in width and will accommodate at least two cars. Screening is not necessary, is not required because this is a residential single-family development. And again, there is a significant amount of open space here on this proposal. And the formant standards again would not apply just because this is a residential development. Staff does feel that the proposed changes to the layout are appropriate considering the difficulty in developing on the hydro soils. The overall impact from this development will be reduced since there are 38 fewer lots than originally proposed. We are comfortable with this application. We do recommend approval. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for staff? Mr. Mulchan, are you here?
Yes, Mr. Chris Phillips, I am here. I'm here to answer any questions as the commissioner or anyone I might have tonight on that side and they do agree with Doug's recommendation for approval on this reduction in the overall lots.
Thank you, Rob. Any questions for the applicant?
Yes, I want to ask a question. Looks like some of these houses are very close to the stream that goes through the middle of it. Just looking at the picture that's on our screen now, looks like they sit pretty close to it. I'm concerned about a large flooding event that people would have running water through their house.
Yes, Commissioner. We are in the process, as Doug talked about, we did include, we've already submitted a preliminary plan for Section 1 and part of those lots in Section 1 actually do back to the creek. We have done an analysis on the drainage way through there and we have raised those building pads up on those lots to make certain that we aren't being, potentially leaving any houses open for water coming underneath the homes on that side.
Mike, any follow-up?
Oh, I'll run him through the ringer to be sure, yes. We have not seen any construction plans on this, but I anticipate some drainage culvert enhancements to Lidle Creek Road. Like Rob said, building pads will be a key issue as well. Doug mentioned the wetlands on the west side, but there also is a lot of flood, theme of flood zones. So with no lots over there, we won't have to worry about that, just the localized drainage issues on this side. But we will look at this carefully as we do any other subdivision, so we will make sure that the houses are protected.
Answer most of your questions, Marvin. Very good, thank you. Any other questions for the applicant or for staff? Ready for our public hearing? This time I'll declare a public hearing open for REZ 20-017, Rob Mulchan for Robert Stroop. Anyone wishing to speak? Anyone wishing to speak? Hearing or seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Commissioners.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve subject to staff comments.
We have a motion and a second to approve REZ 20-017. Call or roll, please, Gal.
Chip Penion.
Yes.
Craig Lynch. David Jones.
Yes.
Jim Aberwater.
Yes.
Lee Bogle.
Yes.
Marvin Whitworth.
Yes.
Mike Kush.
Yes.
Pettis Reed.
Yes.
Rhonda Allen.
Yes.
Jeff Phillips.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item 6BF, REZ 20-018, MH Way LLC is the applicant. Location is Rucker Road. Commission district is six. And the very popular Joe Frank Jernigan is the county commissioner tonight. Size of the site is approximately 89.5 acres. Tax map is 149. Existing zoning is a PUD, planned unit development for a residential subdivision. Proposed zoning is a PUD amendment, revised layout. Doug?
Yes, sir, thank you. The particulars of the last application actually apply to this one to a large extent. The Rucker Landing PUD was approved by the Board of Commissioners back in June of 2018. The preliminary plan for that, this development that we're talking about now was approved by the Planning Commission in September of the same year, 2018. There was also a revised preliminary plan that you may recall seeing earlier this year for Sections 1 and 2 back in February, which made some minor modifications to the approved preliminary plan. Wetlands determination for this development revealed a significant portion of the site was impacted by wetland soils and was not appropriate for residential construction. This determination necessitated a change in design as well as the reduction of lots. Staff advised the applicant these changes were more than could be approved administratively and instructed them to submit an amendment to the PUD, again, similar like we just considered the application just a moment ago. Development was allowed to proceed, however, in those areas that were not affected by the wetland soils and were still consistent with that PUD approval. The original PUD was approved for 246 lots. The revised design proposes 172 lots, again, if my math is correct, which is a reduction of 74 lots. The overall density for the development is 1.74 units per acre, which is a decrease from the 2.5 originally approved. Similar to the last application, minimum lot sizes, house sizes, et cetera, are the same as originally approved. Small exception to that, there's about seven lots that are identified on the concept plan in the pattern book, if you, you can find that in, on your iPads as well, that are called alternate interior lots. They're a little smaller than your typical interior lots, 6,600 square foot as opposed to 7,200 due to the presence of the wetland soils and the buffer areas that are associated with those, so they've shrunk those down just a little bit. All lots will be for purchase. The plan incorporates amenities program, which includes playground, large usable open space. There's also estate lots along Rucker Road and as well as the minimum brick masonry percentages. Everything is there spelled out in the pattern book, which you can find again on your iPads. But all that's remaining the same. The proposed layout shows two separate connections to Rucker Road. As you recall, under the original plan and in the revised pattern book in your, on your iPads and on SharePoint, there is a comparison of the two plans. There was originally a connection proposed to the Colonial State subdivision to the south, but due to the wetland soils, that connection has been removed. And again, there are no connections shown to the Applewood subdivision to the west and there weren't in the original plan either. The traffic study was completed for this development as part of the project. The applicant is committed to make the improvements called for in that traffic study, both to Rucker Road and to the intersection of Rucker Road and Shelbyville Pike. Landscaping, again, beyond the open space shown on the master plan, no additional buffering or anything is required as the residential developments don't typically require that type of buffering. And the amenities package, again, is shown over 35 acres and the formant standards would not apply. Again, most of the details from the original pattern book are not being changed, similar to the last application we just discussed. The primary changes are to the proposed layout, which do result in a reduction of 74 lots, the removal of the connection to Dream Accord, and the addition of several alternate interior lots that we discussed. Again, staff is comfortable with this amendment and we do recommend approval. Neighborhood meeting on this was held as well. So with that, we'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Doug. Any questions for staff at this time?
Doug, I remember when we first started with this, I forgot how long ago that was, we had a gentleman that lives in that vicinity and was talking about when he has to take his children to school at Christiana, when he hits 231, making a left is impossible. Traffic light.
Mm-hmm. It's on the way.
Is it on the way soon as this is going to be or what?
No, sir, we have, we have approved the plans. They are on the way to the state for their approval. We've had a, several design teams, the, actually, Davenport Station on the west side of 20, excuse me, 231 will be installing the traffic signals and left turn lanes, turning into their new road and a left turn lane coming on to Rucker. This development will be installing a dedicated right turn lane going north, but it will, all this will be in conjunction with the traffic signal that's in the works at the state right now.
All right, that's good. I know, I know those folks are, they have a tough time there, tough time.
Yes, yes.
Has this been cut twice when the first original amount of lots? Because I mean, it's a lot of, lot of, lot of wetland right there.
You mean amended?
Yeah.
No, this is the First Amendment that's come back to you. There have been some tweaks to the overall design, but nothing, the tweaks that we did approve, we were able to approve without having to go back through this whole process. But we knew going through that, that there was a big one coming and this is the big one right here.
Any other questions for staff at this time? We have a Mr. Melson, a Mr. Glenn, a Mr. Jones, and a Mr. Jacobs that have signed up online. Any one of you like to make a comment?
Hello, this is Nathan Melson with Civil Infrastructure Associates. I just wanted to introduce myself. I'm the civil engineer on this project and would be happy to answer any of the commissioners' questions, but Doug covered everything fairly well. Just, if you have any questions, please feel free to ask.
Thank you, Mr. Melson. Any questions for the applicant? Thank you very much. Ready for our public hearing? This time I'll declare a public hearing open for REZ 20-018, MH Way. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this rezoning request? Hearing or seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Commissioners? Mike?
Thank you, Chairman. This question goes to Mike and Matthew. And Doug, stay on that particular slide that you have up. You have the railroad that runs, I guess, to the right of the property, west maybe, I'm not sure what the direction. So that creates a natural dam and that appears pretty apparent by the wet soils up in the top right corner and the bottom of the property. So in the new design, if you flip to the, the new book, that looks like that's all detention area and green access. So my real question is, knowing that you have the railroad dam on the right, if the pond in the upper right overflows, where is your outlet, where is that outlet going to go to?
The railroad tracks. The railroad tracks, if that, if that culvert is overwhelmed and can't flow what it needs to, we've required that the, all the pads for the houses to be above the railroad tracks. So if it were ever to build up in that area, it can spill over the railroad tracks and continue to the east.
Railroad tracks?
Yes.
Amazing, okay.
Yes. We've already approved two sections of construction plans, so they've, they've already done a lot of work on the project already. And these, these pads, like I said, have been elevated above the elevation of the railroad tracks. So if it does create, you know, a dam gets overwhelmed, he's, he's got the volume there, but you know, we could have another 2010. And so we, we've required that the pads for all those houses be above that elevation.
I think what you told me is that in a, in a 100-year flood or greater, then if the pond overtops the outlet pipe, it's basically going to overtop the railroad.
Yes, sir.
Chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve subject to staff comments.
Thank you, Jim.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve REZ 20-018 for MH Way. Other questions or comments? Call or roll, please, Gal.
Chip Penion.
Yes.
Craig Lynch.
Yes.
David Jones.
Yes.
Jim Aberwater.
Yes.
Lee Bogle.
Yes.
Marvin Whitworth.
Yes.
Mike Kush.
Yes.
Pettis Reed.
Yes.
Rhonda Allen.
Yes.
Jeff Phillips.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Any reports or other business?
No, sir. Mike, do you have anything?
On your agenda, you'll see that our next meeting is scheduled for 9:00 a.m. on Monday, July 27th. It has us listed for the planning, may I ask, but that is incorrect. The governor extended the virtual meeting and so we'll be meeting in this room on July 27th at 9:00 a.m. Anyone have anything? Let the chair kind of rattle on for a minute. I appreciate all of you coming, all of you wearing your mask to this meeting. It was beneficial to not only your fellow commissioners, but to the general public as well. Continue to do that when you go out. Practice social distancing every hour of every day until we can get through this mess. Thank you for your attendance and your participation. We are adjourned.